Ah, well, I guess I would like to call to order the meeting of program and personnel. And let's go ahead and just start with the pledge of allegiance and then I'll review the agenda.
The two republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A little nervous doing this in front of Jim, who has done it so beautifully for so many years. He will go down in history, in my mind, as being the person to have run the most difficult meeting ever. And I hope that I can, I can live up to your standards, sir. Okay, so we have an invitation for public comment, followed by discussion items, employment of employees, educational tours, and intergovernmental agreement for outdoor education that I really want to hear about. The board governance handbook update, legislative priorities, future agenda items, and then we will adjourn.
Can I make a brief edit? We are not prepared to discuss the legislative priorities. We'd like to do that at a future meeting, so if we could strike that, please.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, and now, as you say that, I recall I have not sent you my legislative priorities yet. Now.
It does say draft on what was attached to the agenda item.
Yes, it does.
But we'll bring back an even more fully prepared discussion.
Okay, I see that we have members of the community here. Do we have anybody who would like to speak? So invitation for public comment, seeing none. We will move on to item three for discussion. And then before we get started on any of these, I just have a general question. On some of these, like the educational tours, the, like the descriptions, the Vernon Hills Outdoor Adventure Club, the Camp Duncan request, those are all under administrative content. Those should all be public content prior to every meeting and that exists here and in other spots.
With the ed, the ed tours particularly, we try not to release the specifics of where students will be traveling to the public.
Okay.
So we put a very brief summary. So the public understands what kind of learning experience the students will be having, but we only share the details of the trip with the board members.
Okay, that makes sense. And then I'm assuming the same is true then for item C, the intergovernmental agreement, because that's also in administrative content?
Yeah, so I had the brief summary in the public comment, but because we're still working on some of that legalese with us in the village, I don't want to.
Okay, so the assumption moving forward is if it's in administrative content, it's just not ready yet. It's not, or we don't want to publish it because of security reasons.
Correct.
Okay.
For example, the intergovernmental agreement will be published once.
Eventually.
We're vote, you know, once it comes before the board and meeting, whatever.
Okay, super, thank you. Okay, so we're headed to three A, employment of employees. Take it away.
And for the employment employees, we do, we are going to remove Jessica Trujillo from there. So we had offered her a position, but she has since turned us down and taken another position, so. And that'll be, that's on consent agenda, so when that comes across in the board meeting, her name will not be on there.
Okay. Were there any questions about any of those? I had one.
I did have one question.
You go right ahead. No?
I was interested, especially with the interventionist, the two new positions. Did we not have any in-house, I mean, was there no interest from in-house candidates? I noticed both of these are, are new employees coming from outside the district. Are we, was there no interest with current faculty?
So we had, well, so these positions are part-time positions and the funding's still from ESER funds. So these are just, you know, these are part-time positions that we have. John Bacta has worked with us la, worked with us last year through some of the ESER funds. And Stephen Murphy has done some long-term subbing for us in the district, so.
Thank you.
And my question was about Stephen Murphy. He's a former superintendent.
Yes, so his, yeah.
How cool is that?
Yeah.
So he's, pardon? Yeah. And he would certainly know education, but that, that just caught me by surprise is all.
And, and John is a former educator too. So we have two great people helping our students and, and they're doing more than just sitting down with a student and working on algebra and geometry. They're also communicating back to the teachers and to the staff and, you know, who needs the help? When did they come for help? This is what they're working on. So there's, it, it's, it's communication with the teachers, which is important. So it is tough to find the right people, but I, somehow, you know, we, we found two quality people.
Okay, so no other questions for three A. Let's move on to educational tours.
And yes, Sanya was ill this afternoon, so she is at home, but I should be able to answer any questions you might have about the ed tours.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions about the ed tours? At the, I had only one, and that is the Outdoor Adventure Club is going whitewater rafting. I assume all of the waivers and whatnot are handled through the organization because it's a little dangerous, right? So the parents sign off on a waiver?
Yes, it would be through the company that organizes that event.
I went to their website, it looks like fun. I'm excited for them. Anyone? Okay. So now I'm looking right at you. Any, got anything?
It's, it's good that the kids are having all these experiences again, so.
Okay, moving on to three C, the intergovernmental agreement for outdoor education with the Village of Libertyville. The background information is pretty clear, except that we're building structures like temporary. I have to hear about those.
Yeah, so, so part of outdoor education is to build temporary shelter in case you're stranded in the wilderness or you are camping and you want to build a structure from the environment. And so luckily, we do have some space. It's not our space, it's the Village of Libertyville. And just for your, you know, the board to, it's hard to describe the space. We tried to think of the area, but it is the area right by the path right here. So in between, as you walk out the back path to the right of the path towards Butler Lake, there, it's back in there. And a lot of people really don't realize that there is space in there. And so we would like to utilize that space. The village is on board with us utilizing this space, but we need to have a, an agreement with them. And so our, my hope is, we've reviewed this internally with our team. So I shared it with our assistant principals, also our department chair for physical welfare, and said, does this encompass everything that you see that you're doing? They met with the village prior to all this. And, and so they all have an understanding of what is going on. I put that into an agreement. I've also shared with the village, our hope is that they are able to review it internally with their attorney also, and that we can both make, approve it at our September, us for our September board meeting and them about the same time, so.
With all the popularity of TV shows that feature the building of temporary structures, I think this is right in line with what is popular, modern. Cool.
And again, you know, it, it is great. I, I think both for outdoor education classes and you saw it from the, you know, the trip that they're going ed tour, that our students are able to do some of these great things and get outside and, and learn and so.
How, how many total students do we have in these classes now?
I think there are two sections at each, so maybe I want to say like almost a hundred and something across the district, maybe.
Outstanding.
Yeah, it may be increased, I have to look.
I will note for public record, there is no additional cost to the district to use that land.
Right, correct. Excellent. Okay, going on to the board governance handbook update. The board governance handbook was drafted, written by this board. We decided that there needed to be a way to onboard new board members as they get elected. So we'll be going through the process eventually of finding a new board member. And one of the expectations will be that they read the governance handbook and that will show them, like it's creating our culture. So we have an update. Which, which of you want to take this one?
Sure, I'll go ahead and start. When we authored this, we had relationships with one organized union. And so we were clear with the expectations for the board's role and how we would facilitate that in terms of negotiations. Now that we have recognized a second union, we wanted to make sure that it was clear how we would recognize and formalize the relationship between the board and that union. We did get recommendations from our attorney that for this union, he recommended that board members not play a direct role because of when and how the negotiations take place. But that after we do the heavy lift of the first one, should we want to revisit that, he would recommend it. But again, his, his suggestion was the language we included here.
Okay. Anybody have anything they'd like to say about the handbook? All right.
I just have one question on that area. And I know Denise, you're pretty good about looking at what other school districts are also doing. Is that fairly standard practice to, for that, for that type of union to have the board get involved sort of at the end versus in the sausage making?
I might actually defer, when we, when I talked with Lynn about this, he said, yes, this is standard. And actually, I think the idea of having board members at the, directly at the negotiating table is in itself for even the teachers' union, an anomaly that across the state of Illinois, most board members do not sit at the day-to-day bargaining sessions. But I know that's been a historical pattern for D128 and something that this board values. But I think that's where he said, let's, let's make sure that we're already sort of in this unique situation by the prominence with which the board plays in the teacher negotiations. Let's maybe step back and fall in line with what is a traditional approach in terms of valuing the board's time and making sure that because it's likely to correlate really strongly with the handbook that Bryant has already built with the union and then also correlate with the teacher's contract, that there'll be a lot of meeting time dedicated to things that the board would probably not want to spend its time on. So that was his overall recommendation to make sure all of you were using your time wisely.
Very good.
Thank you, Denise.
We have to adjust the signature page or create a second, a denim or something? Because this was affirmed by, in the group of people, including Casey.
And I guess that would be maybe one other thing, knowing that we are making this change to reflect our newest union. I also would want some input on should the signature of this be, once we've seated our new board member and had a chance to review it? So we can, we can adjust the language and then maybe even think about having an onboarding session with the new board member and signing it as a new team of eight? That could be one thing that we consider doing in terms of the, the timeline for it.
Yeah, I like that.
Okay.
Okay, if there's no other discussion on item D, then we are skipping item E and moving that to another time. So that brings us to future agenda items. They are listed under public content, but highlights?
I have a suggested future agenda item.
Okay.
I mentioned, it is for a future, future agenda item, not for a suggestion for our next item. But I noted, noted with interest that Highland Park High School is piloting a weapons detection system at one of their entrances. I would love to ask Dr. Herman to be in touch with them over the course of this school year as they pilot that program to see how it's going, if it's something they can intend to continue, why they either will or won't continue it. Just as an information sharing, I know that we've had no recommendations from our safety experts to change our security procedures, and I'm not suggesting that we do so.
Nor has there been a call from the public.
Correct, and in the case of Highland Park, I also noted with interest that both the students and the teachers were not in favor of this, but that the parents were in favor of it, which is why they're piloting it at one entrance. I'd just like to have a data sharing, if they've always been, and all of our peer districts have always been very willing to share information among superintendents. So I'd just like at some point in the future.
Yes.
To hear how that program is going, what they've learned from it, if they're going to continue it or not. I just think it's important because there are peer differences in our area. Let, let's learn from, from their experience.
It's a good idea.
So I'm happy to take on that research assignment. It will also dovetail, I just want to remind us that we did have our own safety team come and present. I believe it was last January or February. So the board had that comprehensive review of the safety timelines, the trainings we do with staff and with students. And so that continues to be our foundational practices. And I'd be happy to explain what our neighboring school district is doing in addition to those methods that we've already discussed as part.
I'm also very curious to hear about the financial aspect, what it costs and how they're funding it.
Okay. All right, well, Jim. If I look at the clock there, I'm not going to brag.
No, that's respectable. I, I, I feel compelled to congratulate you on your first, first, very, very efficient meeting as chair.
So I will, I will formally adjourn the P and P meeting and turn it over to the capable hands of Dr. Batson, who is our new F and F chair.
So we'll move right on with the, the next meeting here?
Oh, wait, the list says that we're doing the, at five forty-five, we're doing the special meeting.
No, no.
It's six o'clock.
I read that differently.
Five forty-five.
I'm looking at F and F and it says five forty-five, no time.
Okay, good, good, good. All right, well, we almost made it on time.
Okay, call to order. We've already done the pledge, invitation for public comment for the facilities and finance. Anyone wish to address the board? Or the committee, I should say. Okay, hearing none. Moving on, the employee compensation report, our annual report that needs to be published. Anyone want to give a brief background on that?
Yeah, a few years ago, or several years ago now, there was a requirement post administrator teacher salaries on the website. There was a few different laws that went into place and they were a little confusing, so they decided to consolidate and just try to make it as simple as possible to have an annual process. So this is information on many positions in our district and many of the compensation elements that are associated with them. It's not all of our positions, it's not all of the components. ISB decided what positions are shown or not. We have the data for all of them, but the report based on the law through ISB is this report. So there, there are just some positions that are not there, some data that may say zero. That's really because ISB does not want that data and actually won't let us report that data. So it just shows up as a zero. So if you see things that look weird, that's usually the reason why. But this has to be presented at a board meeting before October first. And our regular practice is to present this at the September board meeting and after which we'll post it on the website. And so we try to show it at the committee before we bring it to the board. You won't need to vote on this, this is not anything you have to prove, it's just presented.
But it's required to be on the website, it's.
It is required to be on the website, it's required to be presented to the board.
Any questions?
I have a question. Dan, would you remind me, do we get similar information? Or is, is similar information made public regarding support staff such as school psychologists, counselors, et cetera?
There, there used to be, before all those laws went in and they consolidated down. Now, the only other thing that is really out there that is required by law is an open meetings act posting, which is really covered under IRF employers. And it's debated whether it's all employees or just IMRF employees. But the general practice that you more commonly see is people will post about their IMRF employees beyond a certain threshold. And I, I think the combined compensation, I think it's over seventy-five thousand. But that's based on how they define compensation. So that would include their base salary plus these, some other things, which in my opinion is not, they're not, not the true total compensation, but based on that act's definition of true, of total compensation, we report those and post those on the website as well. Those are just required to be posted on the website and we just post those. But that's not reported to any, any kind of centralized database. We do report non-certified salary ranges and numbers into the state, but it's not tied to an individual name that you can find out. And, and the last thing I would say is this information eventually gets reported to the state. So you could download essentially one spreadsheet that has every person in the state, once they get all the data in. But right now, there's not a publicly available database that would have those, those other kind of positions.
But Dan, aren't our school psychologists and school counselors included in this list? And they're just listed as teachers?
No. They're not, the, we, we tag them as those different, as those positions. But ISB's interpretation of the law.
Okay.
They're, they don't include them. So you, I, I don't quote me, but I, I think it's like social workers, psychologists you wouldn't see, coaches that we have. So our equity coaches, our instructional coaches, like the other part of them is not there. Like the teaching component is there, but then the coaching part is just not reported. It's in our system and we have all that data. It just gets stopped when we try to report it to ISB. And there, and this report comes from ISB's system. Once we input all the data, it outputs this report. That's why this report will look very similar to other reports if you just look up other districts in the states.
So even though they're certified staff, they don't show up on here?
Correct, which is part of what I'm recommending, a legislative change. It would be nice to have consistent information for all positions, in my opinion.
I would agree.
Question? Anyone else? Okay, let's move on. We'll revisit that later in the month. Cafeteria project update, this is going to be fun.
Okay, give me one second so I can share my screen. We good, are you good, Sanel? Okay. So wanted to give the board an update on, on where we are with the LHS cafeteria project. We met Thursday, Thursday or Friday? Thursday, we met Thursday. It was our fifth meeting to review this project. And I wanted to walk through a few things. So I wrote a report to try to give as much as I could as a comprehensive summary of where we are now. We have a whole bunch of people that have been meeting diligently to look at this and get this process moving. Right now, I would say we have a conceptual design and estimate. The board approved us for a schematic design and estimate, which is still in process. We anticipate this time next month, we'll have the schematic design. And so let me give you, it's in the report here, but I'm just going to start at the end, start with the end in mind. And this is in my way. It's a little easier to see, hopefully. So our intention for the next few meetings is right here. So if you can see under September, F and F, which is today, we, the intention is to review conceptual design and estimates. So I will help walk us through that. At the September board meeting, we're going to look at bigger picture beyond just the cafeteria. And then at the October F and F, our intention is to have a more in-depth presentation about the design, bringing Mike there and having some other people present more in-depth on the design and the need and everything right there. What we wanted to is based on our meeting on Thursday, is get some of this information in front of you as soon as possible because this information is not quite what we expected. So that's, that's the roadmap. Oh, and then, then ideally, assuming the continuation of this process, the board approved going to schematic design. The board did not authorize us bidding this project out. We want to be faithful to that process. And so we would request then at the October board meeting for the board to authorize. Step after that is you react to the bids. So that's a roadmap for them. So here, so the next thing I want to do is walk through where we're at in terms of conceptual design. But as I was kind of practicing for tonight and trying to walk through it, my natural inclination was to say, here's what the, here's what it looks like right now, and then here's what the future state is. However, I realized I did not include for you a current state. And so my apologies, that didn't occur to me until this afternoon when I was preparing for this. So I tried my hardest, and I am not a graphic designer, to put together some way to view what the current state is. So this is my attempt at doing that. Figured out how to add squares and make them, adjust the opacity. Opacity, is that the word? The see-throughness of it. So here is the best way to review what we have right now. And I'm trying to match the colors, so, and it's not terribly labeled, I apologize. This purple-ish area is the current kitchen on the floor plan. It's oriented north is up. This is the current kitchen where they prepare the food. The yellow is this place, the servery, the place where they serve the foods. We have this, this area they walk into and then this other area they walk into. And then if you notice here, there's another little area that I have marked off because there's a, there's a.
Detle station.
Kiosk, a station, kiosk there that is where food is served as well. So I'm trying to represent that as best as I could. And then in the back here is where you have the teacher's calf, the teacher dining area in a lighter red color. And then the lighter green area is the current dining, I believe, for. Pardon?
It's very, very well done, Dan.
So that is current state. Now. Let me try something. One sec. See if this works. That work? Almost. It's good. Please. Or just move it down. Perfect, that's perfect, okay. So even better. So the, the future state then is on the right. So the kitchen, colors are supposed to match, hopefully. Kitchen rotates to the left and moves to the left. Rotates counterclockwise and it moves to the left, replacing the teacher dining area, taking over the bathroom. So on the, on the left, if you look at the current state, to the south of the teacher dining is two restroom toilet areas. Those will be taken over as part of the kitchen. And so that's where you can see, so those, in those bigger dark color squares, that would be like the, the storage, the, the refrigeration, the freezer area. So that's where the kitchen would move. And then that would open that entire essentially gigantic rectangle square area.
The bathroom.
What's in that mechanical room? Is that like?
Is that like?
Mark, I'm not sure what's in there right now.
What's in the mechanical room?
Uh, there's uh, oh, sorry. Uh, supply and return, um, units that actually work um, the other side of the auditorium. So we need to relocate those. Um, those units are original. So um, uh, they need to be replaced. So it only makes sense for us to relocate closer to the zone that they are serving. They actually go all the way across the ceiling of the studio theater to feed the one little section over here.
I'm sure they had a very good reason for doing that at the time.
Addition after addition after addition.
Right?
Yeah.
Just to get my bearings, the stairway we come up back here to come.
Is right, yeah, to the mechanical room, yeah.
That's the stairway under Brian's arm.
Okay.
That's the.
That's the studio theater stairs. Were those uh, restrooms that were taking over for the kitchen, were those rehabbed in our last, this past summer?
They were not. Uh, but perfect segue into what about those toilet rooms? Uh, you can't tell this terribly from the shrine, but again, this was after our meeting. Which we did not then have time to go back and create a very pretty document to be able to illustrate this. But at the October F and F, we will have excellent visuals to see exactly what's happening. On the right, where you see the dark color gray, that entire bathroom, toilet, shower area. Will be renovated as part of this project to accommodate the loss of those toilets.
So that's gonna be, it's a current bathroom or it will become a bathroom?
Both.
Those are current toilets and showers that will be renovated to accommodate more and be more efficient with that.
Got it.
Is that a fair summary? Yeah, you're right. What the, I think he's talking about the little square in the bottom left corner above the hallway.
Actually.
Yeah, that right, yeah.
But the areas with the X's where they're pointing out to, that's the elevator and then to the right. That's part of the locker room is shower areas and toilet rooms. Um, and we'll incorporate that because the showers are the old style inefficient.
So that's the toilet area.
So we'll be replacing the toilets that we lost to the kitchen as well as updating. And making more efficient use of the locker room space there.
The toilet shower area of the locker room space, the intention. So as we move further down, then you will see the green, matching the green, that is gonna be dining space. Um, so that little, that'll be like a half wall thing, but this is not meant to be a detailed present, presentation of all of that. But we get a lot more seating as they go down. And one important feature is the courtyard being filled in. And that space used dining. And so the way that drawing is, is having the faculty dining on that. West side, um, to accommodate that. And then more student dining and some uh, skylight views. Um, green space inside. I mean, it could, we're not terribly sure how tall it is, but it could be a very tall space. But the intention is to go up one's.
But on the south and east areas, there's classrooms.
Where.
So we have to be careful about those looking out over and sound into the.
This right here, second floor classroom.
Right.
Thus why the, and so what you can see there is the strip in the, the very light green, there's a strip of skylights right here. That are kind of just was there as an illustrative demonstrative purpose. To not say that's what it's gonna look like. But this is trying to show skylight. Um, and, and actually now that we've kind of made progress in our design. We're gonna get alternative uh, options for skylights. But the intention is to bring in natural light. Um, to the greatest extent that we can do, you know, within the project, right? So that is the, that certain space. So now, so you can see left to right how it compares. But I'm just gonna look at now the total space because we look further down, there is this space right here. Um. I'm, I'm gonna zoom in here, make that a little bit better to see. So this is an area, um, again, I'm sorry, I'm trying to zoom in and get closer here. This is an area called learning stairs, communal stairs. It's a stair area that would start on the first floor. Right near the entrance. So, I mean, the entrance of the school is right here on the right. Where it says vestibule, that's the front entrance, that's the main entrance of the school. Then you walk in, the gym is up here. This area would be. You would see up there, there are these stairs that go up to the second floor, um, into the second floor hallway. Reason why those are there is uh, an original plan of this cafeteria included maybe putting some stairs. At the south end of the cafeteria here. However, as we investigated it and the team, I didn't do it. As smarter people investigated this, it would require the loss of science labs. Labs, or that was unacceptable in, in, uh, due to the nature of those rooms. This space, the architects felt was a better space and they felt that the loss of the space, I'm not sure what space would be lost on the second floor.
Uh, no, just one uh, one prep lab on the second floor we lost. There's an existing staircase in that area presently, and there's a small storage underneath. Um, so it'd be loss of um, that pink area of three hundred nine square feet.
I'm not familiar with the term learning stairs. Could someone explain that? And if we have an equivalent at Vernon Hills High School that I could mentally pull up?
We do not, but there are many examples at other schools that we could give you visual, provide visuals for. Uh, I believe Stevenson has something like that too. They're very large, the, they're, on the one side would be normal stairs you can walk up. And then there would be kind of very large, bigger stairs that the idea is you would.
It's like stadium seating. So if you can think of the Vernon Hills pool, uh, there are kind of seats in there that don't actually have benches. It's just carpeted.
Big, wide.
Wide.
Almost like a landing to lounge and gather.
So kids hang out there, they eat their lunch there. But if you were like taking a class outside, for example, you could have your kids meet at the stairs. You could do an introductory thing and then take them out. So it's.
Did you use the Google?
I used it.
Did you?
It's my middle name. Got it, thank you.
And, and similar to, I, I think some of the spaces there are utilized with the front foyer at Vernon Hills. You know, next to the pool, they have high top tables underneath the stairs. They have some gathering area and then the upper commons. At Vernon Hills. And, and when you look at older schools like Libertyville, those common areas, foyers weren't. You know, constructed or anything like that and sort of find areas for students to gather. Um, to have that space and also to maybe uh, help open up that front foyer a little bit at Libertyville to make it. You know, walk in and maybe um, open up a little bit right there by the, the main gym.
I think another thing it would do is bring a centerpiece focal point to the front entrance of the building. Once you walk in. Um, that doesn't, I don't know that really exists right now in this building. Um, so that, that's the learning stair area. Again, October F and F, we will have. Mike here to be able to show with much better detail. This is just to get a concept of what we've been talking about and where we are. So that is the very basics of what the design is looking like. Before I move to the money, what questions may you have?
And so the boards are where, um, the square footage being used is, is very close to. Uh, the square footage at, at Vernon Hills High School. And the goal was to seat four hundred and fifty students was the goal. I think we ended up with four hundred and forty some at Vernon Hills. We didn't quite make the, the four fifty, but there was a goal here was to make the four fifty. So it's comparable, you know, um, servery's gonna be about same size and the kitchen's uh, approximately same size, just a, a hair larger.
So, may I ask a question? Um, so this is like our dream scenario, right? This is all of our top wishes. This is, this is what we hope we can do with the resources we have. This is how we envision it. Correct? And I know we're about to talk about money, but I imagine there's, and I, I read in your report, there's different scenarios. So I just, I wanna clarify for my own uh, sake that this is as good as it gets in terms of what we hope for, yeah? With all these bells and whistles.
I, I would agree with a lot of what you said. What I, what I would say is this is the current state of the design. Is, is there a, um, is there a more? Fancy is the only word I can think of. Is there a fancier design that we could have?
Yes.
For sure. The sky is the limit. This is the current state of the design that the committee has settled on.
I, I guess I wanna echo that, having sat at four of the five meetings, that this team has been very thoughtful. In creating ideas and putting what we know to be good learning spaces for students at the priority. But it has not been frivolous or, or, you know, asking us to put things on this design. That would not be something I know many of you could support. So it, it, when you said, is, is it all the bells and whistles? No, because I think the committee itself had a range with which it knew. This board and the community would be comfortable investing.
I wanted to know exactly that. Get a sense for kind of where this falls on the spectrum of what we, what we need, what we can afford, et cetera.
And piggybacking on that question, um, is there a scaled back? Uh, version that would still allow us to make other capital investments? That the round estimate of this one will force us to forego.
Uh, right now, the only realistic options we have is um, either this. There's really three main options that we have at this point. It's um, the stairs, removing the stairs from the scope. Having not quite as many skylights. So what you see in this little picture represented by that sliver of rectangle. The, the option that is more skylights is essentially double that. That's, that's what that is. Um, so those are really the three, the three options that I felt we really had coming out of. That we felt we really had coming out of that last design meeting, that we said, we really better bring something to the board before we get. Much further down and don't want any surprises. And so are there options? To say it another way, are there options that could reduce the scope to this to still accomplish everything we want to do? Maybe. I don't, I don't know that the committee has really. Processed through that necessarily.
Um, so I know you're gonna get to the money piece. I, I guess I'm wondering if we forego option two and option three. Would that leave over enough capital where we would not have to postpone? L H A, uh, L H S bathroom renovations or the Vernon Hills High School L S T renovation?
That's a great question. Maybe let me just look at the numbers and I think that might help inform and answer to your question. Cause I, I think that, that's an important question that I think these numbers will help illustrate it.
Great.
Thing. Uh, so if I look at the estimate, there are detail.
Dan, can you hear me? I have kind of one question and I didn't know about your hidden architectural skills there. So. Um, nice job there. But my question, when we are always looking at investing and especially large things like this. I always kind of would like to see a, what problems were we trying to solve? Like you, uh, Mark, I think hit on one. We wanted to seat four hundred and fifty students. Are there other sort of goals that you shared with the design team to say, make sure that whatever design you have? Has X, Y, Z. Whatever those requirements almost are. Because if it comes to pairing down on, we should do this versus take this out versus take this out. Then it's important to know what were the key requirements or key things we wanted to make sure stay.
Uh, to answer that question, um.
Well, I cannot hear Mark at all.
Three, to efficiently get the students in and out as quickly as possible. Um, so, um, I said, it is very, it's very comparable uh, on square footage to Vernon Hills, which has been working. Uh, uh, very well over there. Um, the survey. You have to take down structural walls, uh, but you need for efficiency to be able to cross over and go. You wanna grab a hamburger and then you wanna grab salad, you want, so everybody can move around efficiently in the area. Um, uh, you actually need that size of space and we, we did tweak it quite a few times. Uh, for flow and um, um, you know, around the space, you know.
Can I add something? Um, Ms. Cole Carney, the other thing was that. Is the courtyard as it currently stands provides a great deal of natural light in that space. Um, and obviously an outdoor place for kids to go. We needed to capture that square footage. Um, and you, so that would expand the size of the cafeteria for us. That was really the only space we could capture. Um, but we have really been asking the architects to consider multiple ways for preserving natural light. Uh, because we think that that benefits our students and the overall health and um, wellness and just kind of the general feel of that space. And the other thing that we asked the architects to do was make sure that this remained a multi-use space. So that the cafeteria could be used um, after school for continuing to serve dance or other activities that. We asked, and then the other piece was that to preserve some piece of like a student. Um, gathering and informal feel like a coffee bar, coffee shop type of feel. Um, in our quest contract, they had, um, we had worked with them to include. The creation of a, of a coffee bar space where kids could grab snacks. Um, drinks, juice bar, coffee bar and after school type of nourishment. Um, and so those were some of the design parameters that we gave to the architects. As they worked through the multiple designs that got us to this point.
Right.
Thank you.
I'm not questioning the fourth. Oh, I'm sorry, Sunal, go ahead.
I, I just had uh, two follow-ups. I think one that Dawn would like, but have you also considered? Making this, you know, more efficient green, the color, not, not painting it the color green, but you know what I mean? By making the entire space more energy efficient was kind of one question. And uh, the second was have you gotten any student inputs into what they think is important?
Having in October, we actually do have students coming to share um, the research they've been doing about. Not so much about alternative energy and green energy, but about uh, recycling, composting and running a sustainable. School cafeteria. Um, so those students have been invited to our next design meeting and will speak with. Um, it'll be good for them because they will be able to present their ideas to the design team. But they will also get feedback from the architect and the professionals who are gathered there. About, you know, some of their ideas. Um, the other piece is we are planning to invite a couple of our occupational therapists. Um, to take a look at the design and to give us a perspective about. Um, individuals with different types of assistive devices, um, that they may need for. um that they may need for lunches um and to access the cafeteria as well. So now that we've got a, a base sort of design in place, we are at a place where we can begin kind of talking with students about this. Um, Mike Henderson, the architect, would be a person who would come, for example, to the principal advisory board uh and share this type of design down the road and get student feedback um aft, and you know, take into consideration some of the things the students are saying to make um either subtle or more significant design changes.
You'd also pick up efficiencies on new refrigeration units because ours are antiquated. Would that be a good word to use?
Yeah.
Um.
Generous.
Vintage.
Uh, and by moving that mechanical system, we would be taking an older system in improving that.
Yes, you're correct on, on both points. Yeah, um. The ventilation system is, is one, is, is actually original or actually would have been updated. I think in the seventies, uh, so um, it's very lacking. So everything will be improved and that's part of our capital, improve ventilation along the line of, in the building. That, that's an area that needed to be addressed.
Um, I.
Okay, I, uh, I wanted to ask a question about the four, the four hundred and fifty students, and I'm not questioning that that is our, our goal to have four fifty, but just so that, like, explain it to me like a first grader, so I know what currently, how many students are we servicing in each lunch? So would that increase our capacity? Would it stay the same?
Yes, so uh, I can give you an example based on schedule. Um, so right now with there are four, the only way to accommodate all the students um right now through the lunch period was to have four lunch periods. Having four fifty would allow you to have flexibility in the number of lunch periods you have to have in the day. So right now, the lunch room capacity is one of those big rocks that determines the rest of our schedule. That's one example I could share. And so right now, we had the numbers, I'm sorry, I did not anticipate preparing this. Of how many students?
Approximately three fifty.
Okay.
Yeah, oh, give or take a few.
But just to understand that point before we move on from that, the, so the, just to be clear, the lunch capacity seating determines the rest of the schedule. So we don't talk about the rest of the day until we get lunch periods figured out. That's my understanding.
It is a large rock that determines a good chunk of the schedule.
Okay, but that's like the first equation that has to be worked out before you can move on.
Yes. Yeah, similar to if you go back to Vernon Hills, one of the constraints of Vernon Hills was, or one of the effects of the size of that cafeteria was students had twenty-two minutes. They had half a period to eat lunch. And that was an equity issue that we wanted to address at that point and give them the same access to lunch that our Libertyville students had. And so expanding that cafeteria offered, offered that to them.
Do we anticipate, so, and then I'm going to go back to just basics. Do we anticipate by increasing this capacity that there's going to be interest in students and staying at those lunch, I mean, because I know juniors and seniors tend to not stay in the building, so it.
Just seniors. Juniors stay in the building.
Juniors stay.
Yeah. So we, we, I mean, that's always a discussion about who we want to release for lunch. Right now, we're very comfortable with the seniors going out for lunch, which is why we set our number at, um, you know, s- but uh, it's only in the first, it's complicated because in the first semester, about half the seniors stay for lunch because they're link crew leaders. In the second semester, that changes. So we pretty much count about fifteen to sixteen hundred students uh for lunch per day, which is why we have to have four periods um to try to meet the demand of about three hundred and fifty students per lunch period. And give or take, you know, kind of, we're able to work that out roughly. Um, so.
And I'm gonna again go back to very big. Not going to be six, probably not going to be ten. Like when we go to do renovation in our own, is there, is there no design that could stay within what our initial estimate was for this project that would serve all of the, tick all of the boxes that we're looking for, four fifty, updating? You know, we have to be pretty clear.
Two million dollar average, it's, it's double.
Well, I'm going with the ten. I'm giving him, the most it would have been was ten. I get it, it was six, but uh, I'm, I'm, I'm giving grace of, it's not going to be six and it won't be ten, so.
Lovely.
At worst case scenario, we're looking at two, almost three million over our highest estimate.
That is a great question, and you all have been asking great questions. I want to make sure that I'm capturing them so that they're either answered tonight or they're answered at a future meeting. Um, so I, to answer your question, I would need to run through the numbers first. Let me run through the numbers.
I'm not second guessing what the committee did, and I certainly don't want to devalue the time that they've spent coming and bringing this, but this is a huge.
Yeah, I mean, this is our job to ask questions and explore all of the alternatives with our administrative partners so that we make the best possible decision for our community. And I, I, I also share your trust that if there is a lower cost option available, whether it's with our current design partner or exploring other design partners, that you would bring us that information.
Thank you. Um, before I get to the numbers, I, I just, forgive me, Sinal, you asked about sustainability. The, what was your other question? What were our, what were our goals?
Yeah, I mean, um.
Yeah, yeah, the last answer.
Solve.
God, okay, thank you. That was the one I, I couldn't remember. Sorry.
It all goes back to the similar thing. I, I was saying it's similar to what, you know, the team's been doing on capital project prioritization, right? It's if you were to list all those really good uh requirements or problems to solve, and you couldn't meet all of them, which ones would you take off the list? Is one way to think about it, or how can you solve them all, but at a lower cost, which means something has to get right? Those are kind of next steps. And now any other question, I think uh was student input, which Tom, Mr. K answered.
Oh, yeah.
So I have a, a clarifying question too, to go back to, to Kara's uh comment. We're looking at the target of four hundred and fifty students per lunch period, and that's to decrease the number of lunch periods that we have. What's our current? How early or how late do students eat lunch currently or breakfast or?
Yeah, they start lunches third period. Um, so that's approximately, and I have a student here on my right, so, but I think it's approximately ten fifteen, uh, ten eighteen is the first lunch, and then the last lunch is seven or fourth, third, fourth, fifth, and sixth. So the last lunch is sixth period, which goes to a little bit after one o'clock. Six starts at one o'clock. Excuse me. Thank you, Adam.
Third, yeah, third starts at ten thirty and six starts at one o'clock.
Yeah, it's a, a very early, for somebody that's like in a, does athletics after or activities after school and they're eating lunch at ten thirty, that's a long time. Um.
The other piece on the design, Jim, it's, sorry, is not just to get four hundred and fifty into the cafeteria, but then you have to get them in through the lines.
Through the line, yeah.
As well, so.
Overall capacity.
Right, yeah, that's the other complicated part of it. It's, you can increase the size of the cafeteria, but then people won't be able to move through it in an efficient manner um to have everybody s- get their food and eat in the allotted amount of time.
May I ask another question about um the purpose of the learning stairs and
we anticipate allowing kids to be able to eat there um as a space, like, kind of like a resource space for us.
So, but they are not in the count that the architects have.
Oh, yes, thank you, Denise.
The tables represent seats.
Correct, yes.
This is bonus seating at, at this point.
And that would also be like blended space during the day, that kind of.
Flexible.
Yeah, yeah. And just the reference to the number of seats is, there's a range, meaning if we wanted to, we could fit a whole lot more students in there with seating that is very efficient, like long tables would get more bodies in there. Um, this is showing a collection of variety of different seating options, large groups, small groups, uh, like want to eat alone spaces to provide a variety of options available to the students. Um, I, I, I can't answer the question on the sustain, the sustainability. Um, I brought it up on my phone because I can see it here is, uh, Gilbane wanted to clarify, one of the clarifications was that the estimates, this, the, the project will follow sustainability practices. However, um, it will, this, this estimate does not include designing to a sp- any specific green standard like LED well, green globes, EPA Energy Star, and does not include cost for registration and certification. So to answer the question, there's sustainable practices in there, but it's not, there's not a goal of a particular standard that it, that this is trying to do. Um, that is an option that we can pursue. It, it would just affect probably costs and maybe some scope. I'm not exactly sure what the implications are, just to be clear about what is in that number and what's not in that number. Um, and also thank you to Tom for answering some of those questions. I would remind, our intention is at the October FNF to bring a more comprehensive presentation on the design to talk about the goals, the impacts to the students, um, and a more thorough review of the design. This is meant to be a, a brief overview of the concept, and I know this is new and fresh, and there are a lot of questions, and they are great questions. But we will have a lot of more information for you at the next committee meeting.
Can I ask one more that I think might be, I, just for myself, because I wasn't a part of the process? How does this compare in scope and cost to the Vernon Hills cafeteria?
Yep, the Vernon Hills cafeteria, uh, when we were estimating, we, we estimated somewhere between five and six million. Um, all in, I'm calling it roughly six. Um, but when we bid it, it's all one package, so they don't subdivide the different categories. It was one package. Um, which added to the total thirty million that we ended up spending on that big project between the two schools. One important difference um is at the Vernon Hills cafeteria area, we didn't really touch the kitchen at all. We, we did some, some uh venting, but we really did, it was not a major overhaul of the kitchen, like the back of house where you're prepping the food. The, the major overhaul was the servary and the student dining. So that alone, and based on the estimate, so the numbers I have for you include a kind of a breakout of each area. The kitchen itself is about three million dollars. So that, that was just not something I didn't quite realize until after we got the details and were trying to understand why is this so different to what would have happened at Vernon Hills. And three million of that is because of the kitchen is a massive part of this project, where it was not part of the project at Vernon Hills.
Would you say the fifty percent increase in the server and diner, dining is more just about supply chain and inflation, and this is now what it costs to do renovations? Are we getting similar?
Uh, so, so to answer that question, I need to go back to what was the six million dollar number? The six dollar, million dollar number uh was an attempt at a, a guess at the range. And I, I tried to, I tried to foreshadow that it's a range. It depends on the scope. So we don't really, at that time, we especially didn't really know the scope. We just knew this is the area of the building that we're looking to touch. Now that we understand the bathrooms are getting affected, so that affects these other bathrooms over here, or these other toilet areas over here, um, and just kind of the offsetting implications of the different things we've lived through, that's how we understand how the scope has grown from what would have been just a cursory guess originally. Um, I think another thing is when we first were guessing on the six million, we didn't really count the courtyard getting taken over yet, and that's a significant cost because that's a new foundation and a new, you know, ceiling and roof you have to put in. Um, and, and just the other thing is things are a lot more expensive than they were even three, four years ago. And the other answer was just like, I was wrong.
So it's likely that Vernon Hills was more than six million when it was all said and done, but we have no way of.
I, I think, I know, I think that's where it ended up at, relative to the scope of the whole project, because that was a thirty million dollar project that had a lot of different components. I think six million is the right number for Vernon Hills. But this is different. This is, so the six million was wrong. And we have a better idea of the scope of this project now that we've had more people look at this for more period, um, longer period of time. One of the things I can offer that Gilbane mentioned is like, this is tricky, uh, similar to how Vernon Hills was tricky because of the location in the building and the effort it will take to be able to do that, which was not terribly dissimilar to Vernon Hills either. Um, so I, I, at that point, I'd mark, I don't know if you have anything like to add in terms of like, what would have been different that would have affected that?
Yeah, uh, Dan is correct. I mean, Vernon Hills, we had good access through the front to bring materials in. Um, but for example, um, we, they had to hire a helicopter to put all the rooftops on. So here we've got the, we're gonna need extremely large crane uh to get over to, you know, and that was just to put rooftop units was for the heli, uh, the helicopters. We had to put structural steel over, so we're gonna have to have a large crane on the backside of the building to, to reach that distance. So that's a, a very expensive uh part of it, you know, in the area where we're building to enclose the courtyard or to do any other structure, you know, structural work inside.
Um, let me take a second and show you the, the differences between the two. So the base uh that I have here, that's really including the, the kitchen, the servary, uh, the dining, the, the toilet areas being renovated. And then option two is then adding on more skylights. That's doubling the skylight, that, the essential skylights that are in that view. That cost difference is like a hundred and hundred and sixty thousand-ish dollars for more. Um, so that's just knowing kind of what's there. And then to then add the stairs is about another, not quite five hundred thousand, but call it that for just being round purposes. So leads it back to the question you had asked, if we took this exact design based on the estimate, and this is the estimate that Gilbane is, they're predicting it's going to cost this much, when it's all said and done, this includes everything. There, that's what their estimate is. So if we, in theory, if we did enjoy those two things, that would save approximately six to seven hundred thousand dollars. Would that be enough to still allow us to do all of the bathrooms in the number two? I would say no.
What about the um LST space at Vernon Hills High School? Still no?
Uh, if we are going in order of priority, the second thing on the list was the bathrooms at LHS. So if those don't get done, doing the third thing on the list would be the Vernon Hills LST office renovation. So it's really a question of if our intention is to go in priority order or not.
Okay.
So that is not an answer I can give, but that's a decision that should be made.
Okay, thank you.
I think this is exactly what we've been talking about, that they are going to become situations where the LST offices are only three hundred thousand that we might have, but we don't have the six million for the bathrooms. So as long as we are staying true to the spirit of our prioritization, are we asking that it absolutely be ap- concrete and absolute, or we say there is some flexibility as long as we are, you know, staying true to the spirit of what our priorities, I'm, that's how I would feel. That's why, Dan, and I thought it would be important for our next conversation to go back to the bigger picture list. So we're trying to make sure that the conversation.
So we're trying to make sure that the conversations the board needs to engage on are in an order that makes sense to you in terms of thinking about this new information, then putting it in the bigger context, then taking a deeper dive into the design before you need to be prepared to make a decision on going for bid or not going for bid.
And then the only thing I would add, I think your comment is a good one in terms of the philosophy. I think the flip side, the argument could be made, well, do we just wait and save until we can accomplish the next priority on the list? I'm not suggesting that that's the right answer.
But that's the conversation.
That would be the next conversation.
Is it an absolute and concrete list? Or is it more of, this is what we have available and this is what we can do?
Sure.
So just a couple of comments on this. I know, you know, and comparing Vernon Hills to Libertyville, the situations, it's sort of apples and oranges. It's, it's a little difficult. I do know completely enclosing that courtyard is far more difficult than the small addition we put into the courtyard at Vernon Hills. So there's, there's a lot of complicating factors, I guess is my point with this, that could cause it to be, you know, a larger number. The challenge, I would say, is, for example, do we do this project without the learning stair? And what then does that cost us to do the learning stair later? Is it more? Is it the same? You know, can we postpone that to be able to save some money to do something else? And how much of a priority is that? Also, maybe, you know, just going back and challenging. So just so we're all on the same page, the way this is costed out here is that Gilbane actually does the estimating based on a design by STR, the architects. So it's not the architects making the estimates, they're making the design. Gilbane's not making the design, they're making the estimates based on what the design is. So I think one challenge that we have, now that we were sort of in the sticker shock stage with the, you know, 12, 13 million dollars, is to go back and say, okay, are there things that we can do still to accomplish what we're trying to do? And maybe, you know, trim an extra, whatever that might be, and having them put their heads together to be able to do that. And, you know, many people call that value engineering, whatever that might be, but how do we get there where we can still afford to do some of the other projects that we want to do and still accomplish this? But, you know, are there ways to, to, to adjust it in some way? This is the first swing at it, you know, this is the first crack at it. So I guess my comment would be to go back to them and say, are there, are there things that we can do that would make this, you know, still accomplish the same things, but make it a little more cost effective? And, and then the questions about the add-ons, is it, can we add the extra skylights later and when we have the money? Or can we add the stair later? Or does that double the cost? It's ridiculous, we might as well do it now while we can. So that's sort of my, my comments.
I think it's, I think it's fair to say that when we saw the price for the stairs, that was lower than what we would have guessed it would have been.
Me too.
And I think all the questions you're asking are extremely appropriate questions to ask. I would just say in the process, this is, this is always a tricky thing, what comes first, the chicken or the egg? What comes first? Do we say, build, design something that fits within this dollar amount? That is not what we did. We tried to, the 6 million was a guess to say like, how much do we think it might cost? Or a range that we think it might cost? Now that we know more, this, and this is very common in most projects. You start with a design, you get an estimate, you get a sense of reaction to that estimate, and then you move forward or you make adjustments, and you kind of go, this is very natural in most of these processes. I didn't feel it was important to say, design a cafeteria renovation for $6 million. That was not the direction we gave them, or that was not the direction that was given. Just to understand the concept of how did, how did we get here? It was, let's try to, let's hit the goals that we're trying to hit and meet the needs that we're trying to meet, and then what would that be? And this is what we have at this point.
The other comment I'll make on that is, if we did go back and say, okay, no, we can't do the 12 million, we got to do 6 million. Design is something for 6 million, and that 6 million doesn't get us what we need, then we've thrown good money after that. So we have to make sure that we're, we're meeting our, our goals and getting what we need. So I, I think there's design first, and then, you know, maybe if there's ways to tweak it, we can, but I think you have to put the design down first to really get what you need out of the project.
I would agree. And I would suggest that while this design is appealing, I don't want to be so quick to give up the priority of the bathroom renovations at LHS, because that is also something that we have identified as a, not just a priority, but it is a health and safety issue. So let's not be too quick to move forward. I would agree that the way that the process was handled was appropriate, and that this is the appropriate stage to say, hey, this is much more than we were expecting because of what we have to give up if we move forward with this. We're not ready to give up our other priorities to move forward. What else can we do that would still meet our needs? And absolutely, I agree with Jim, that if we find out that something that significantly lower cost that allows us to still renovate the bathrooms does not meet our needs, then we're, we're not going to spend money to get something that does not accomplish our goals. That's, that's really not a conversation I think we'd be having, but I'm also reluctant to give up the other priorities so quickly.
Well, and likewise in that same spirit, is it possible to kind of scaffold this out over time? And I believe in what you provided so far, was it going to be a two summer project? Right, so kind of stage it, you know? Is, is maybe the kitchen and the servary these top priorities and getting our kids what they need in terms of food? Does every, you know, can we, can we put that out and lay out that cash, so to speak, in that first phase? And then come back years later and kind of just upgrade as we go? Is there a downside to doing that? Is it more expensive to draw it out that far? And these are all questions, obviously, that you would need to take back to the team. But certainly, I, I think that may marry logically if we want to also honor the other projects that we have in mind coming up.
Conversely, if we could span the scope to accommodate 450 students and renovate bathrooms, what does that get us? Because I think economy of scale is more likely than a significant reduction in meeting our priorities. So.
In the same way, we renovated several bathrooms with this project.
Can we add, are there others in the area that might make sense without increasing significantly the project?
Lisa, I agree. I was going to suggest that is, you know, we, sometimes we think about reducing, but what about if you added one or two bathrooms? How might that look? And can we get it all done in one shot?
Okay.
I have one more thing to add there, Dan. You mentioned that Gilbane said that we, we are not necessarily meeting any of a variety of standards for energy efficiency or whatever. Can we ask Gilbane what would, what would be necessary to meet a lead standard? Like if we're close to a lead standard anyway, and the difference is four inches of foam insulation versus three inches of foam insulation in the attic? Well, then let's, let's consider that. So if there's a significant cost increase to get, meeting a lead standard, then that would make it prohibitive. I understand that, but we don't know what that is.
I think at least portion of that cost is not in improving what we do. It's documenting, auditing.
Correct.
Paying licensing fees to those organizations to, to just acknowledge that we've done something.
It's like 30 grand just for the application.
Yeah, so versus just doing those good practices anyway, and not worried about, you know, getting some kind of a certificate and paying a lot of money for it.
But the essential thing is that we ask the question.
Yeah, right.
And we know that we're building the most sustainable project possible that fits our needs and our budget, even if it doesn't end up in applying for a certification.
Right, yeah, correct.
What, what would those things be that we could do? What would those cost? How would that change the scope of the project? Because I think it's a really important conversation to include.
Or if it would even change the scope of the project much.
So thank you for bringing that up, Sunal.
Right.
Another good question.
Cara Beck, I believe it was your question about phasing? Could you break something into this into phasing? You probably could look at phasing things. One thing to consider with this design is in order to accomplish the renovation of the kitchen, we have to remove the current staff dining. And if, for example, as a sample phase, if it was just the kitchen and the servary, that would not include us being able to provide an alternative space for that. So, so meaning the phasing could be, but there may be implications that we would probably need to think through some of those too. Don, can I ask a clarifying question to what you had asked? Are you curious about specifically lead standard? Or are you interested in what would it?
Lead is, lead is something I'm familiar with. So, but it would not necessarily have to be USGBC. It could be some other entity, but I, I like the lead standards, I understand them.
So are you curious about what would, what would be necessary for us to meet some type of objective, sustainable standard?
Yes.
Okay. Lead being the one that you know, this is not an area I know much about, so.
Gilbane, they do.
For sure, and for sure, our architects would as well.
Yeah.
So.
I just thought of something. Are there, is anyone, are there any grants or anything available, like from industry if we were to pursue any of these sustainable standards?
That's another good question. That is a good question that I do not know the answer to. At the same time, I, I do know there are many grants out there. A lot of times they are for smaller dollar amounts that may not necessarily have a material impact to this. But that said, there's a lot of things out there that we may not be aware of that we could look into.
To that point though, I mean, if you think about, many of us have contacts and understanding with other projects that have happened at other districts, and I don't recall any significant funding coming specifically to construction or renovation, you know, to get lead certification, anything like that, that, you know, reaped a lot of money to be able to do that. I just don't, I have never heard of anything like that. Yeah, maybe to put some grants to put solar panels on the roof or something to that effect, but just as a general renovation and trying to improve the, the footprint of that, that renovation, I haven't heard of anything. So there might be, but.
Gilbane will have an idea.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but you know, it looks like we have to build a new roof for the open space at the courtyard space. Can that have solar panels? I mean, I'm just kind of getting as creative as I could and see if we can get some financial help.
One thought about the bathrooms and the toilet rooms, as a separate item, I don't want to be remiss that we do have toilets renovation as part of this project. That is, we feel a necessary implication of removing those. And so, and that, I, I think it was like three quarters of a million dollars in terms of the numbers. So, so like, we are addressing some toilets in this project that then you wouldn't need to address in the number two. So that, that could be an impact. So meaning to the point of, could you look at more bathrooms? That's a great question, because we, we already are touching some bathrooms as we felt necessary to this project, we could see what are there is to expand as an option.
Okay, so can we move on to the larger capital list? Any other questions or comments about this specific?
I would just like to be clear that I have notes that I have got a variety of questions, but I think a few major questions are, what would, what would be options? What would be realistic options to have a material impact on lowering the cost for this project? If we don't do some of these components, for example, the stairs or the skylights, what potentially could those be if they were on their own? Is there a way to look at phasing this over multiple projects that wouldn't materially hamper our ability to operate? What would it be to, what would be necessary to have, to meet a standard, some type of objective sustainability standard? What would it look like if we added more toilet rooms to something like this to get a better economy of scale over here? Those are my sense of like the bigger questions that I had to answer, to look at. Is there anything that you felt was missing from our conversation? I think those are good.
No, and I want to express how skillfully you navigated us through this conversation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. No other questions? Can we move on to the capital projects update?
Give me, sorry, one second, I had to close my internet. Is this the summer capital projects? Mark, do you want to just hit highlights of the, this is the, the final-ish version of how did our summer projects end? A lot of visuals associated with those that we didn't quite have last time? Anything that you want to highlight?
Unfortunately, I can't get back into my Gmail, it won't let me log back in. So off the top of my head, so Vernon Hills, the baseball infield project was completed since our last meeting. The weight room flooring, everything was corrected. You'll see the pictures, it looks fantastic, the kids are using it.
You were happy with the way that it looked when you walked down the hall?
Yeah, I was very happy with it.
Second time's a charm.
The.
The baseball infield looks terrific.
With delay at Libertyville with the handrails at the washrooms. There is temporary handrails there right now, out by the stadium. So there was material delays and expected in a few more weeks. But that was, we were told August 28th before the scoreboard was finished. We didn't have that, those pictures. And I think that captures everything that we, the projects that weren't finished at the time.
We got delivery of the truck.
Oh, and we did, yeah. We got, we picked up the truck, yes.
Okay. Any other comments on, on this list? Some good work over the summer.
The bathrooms look beautiful.
Step up.
And those drinking fountains look very appealing as well.
All right, hearing no other comments on that. Next item is the graduation contract with Rosemont.
So we have for you a final version of the contract for Vernon Hills staff graduation at the Rosemont Theater that we wanted to provide you now for consideration of approval at our September meeting. I would like to just, there was a fair decent amount of questions about the contract at Vernon LHS, how is that similar in what we've done? So let me, me cycle back on that. So for LHS, doing it at the Now Arena or back when it was the Sears Center has been in place for a while. Our board policy essentially says things that we have budgeted, we can enter into contracts and kind of move them forward. And so our general practice has been for things that are continuing that aren't really a change. Once we have the major change. Once we have the major change, which is the first time we do it, uh, or if we have a, if we didn't have a budget but needed to sign the contract, our policy wouldn't allow us to really sign that contract. That we, I would move it, would ask the board to approve it. But we move those other regular business items forward per our policy. Technically, we did make a provision for, kind of anticipating this coming. When we budgeted, we made a provision for a fee like this. We just put a rounder number in there for graduation at Vernon Hills. At the time, we didn't envision that it was Rosemont. We didn't, we weren't totally sure what to envision. And so because of that, and because of the very newness of this and how some of this has been public at board meetings, we felt it was recommended to bring this to the board for approval. But we wouldn't have normally brought, and actually the, the Libertyville High School graduation is a two-year contract. This is the second year of that contract. Uh, so there is, there's already a contract in place for that. So this would be just for the one year. The amount, 43,000 is extremely similar to, uh, the Libertyville High School graduation. So in terms of cost, it's very, very similar. And we just had some few minor term adjustments to the contract. But, um, the Rosemont people are very happy and very excited and very, very happy. They're very joyous people that are very excited for us to have a graduation at that facility. So, um, so Dr. Gilliam presented more context and background. This is really more about here is the contract, here is the amount that we would look for approval at the September meeting.
Okay, thank you. I would, my, my only concern with this is I think the contract's great. I know, for example, the technology people, this will be something new and different to go remote. And if they're planning to do video production like these talented folks over here do at the, uh, the, the Wow Arena or whatever, then wow, Now, Now Arena, yeah. You know, that's quite a, quite a, an undertaking. So, you know, if there's any contingency for additional support or staff, because these folks will be busy at one place while this is going on. So just to make sure that the, the people putting on this production have the support they need, whether it's the tech folks, whether it's the organizer, you know, people organizing or guiding people or processes, whatever.
Spoken like a true director of technology.
Yeah, yeah.
We always.
I just know that big events like that are, they make it look very easy. You know, when you, when see it happen, but there's a lot of work that goes into that. Going through it for the first time in a new location with, you know, with maybe gear that hasn't really traveled much, that kind of thing. That's, um, just want to make sure they have what the resources they need. Any other questions on this?
I have a stupid one.
I had one.
What are the go bo's? You have to get in line, Sonal.
Hang on, Sonal.
Uh, in the fees, it said that the fee covers everything except for go bo's. What is excluded?
Uh, respectfully, I have to reject the premise of the question. It is not a stupid question because I asked the same question and I don't think it's a stupid question. A go fan or what, uh, what is it? Thank you, that. Those are the banners that hang on the side of each, they flank each side of the stage that typically has the school logo. They put lights on it. There are these gigantic fancy.
Banners.
Banners. That's what those are.
Yeah, with like specific lighting kind of thing on it. Yeah.
So those we would have to purchase separately.
They are not bogo.
Okay, Sonal, you have a question?
Yes, I saw there's, did I read that correctly? That there is only 50 parking spots? And everyone else has to pay $20.
Pay the fee.
I, I believe the way the contract is structured is that we pay part of the 43,000 includes paying to buy out the parking lot.
Oh, includes the whole.
10,000 to buy the parking lot.
We pay $10,000 to buy out the parking lot.
If we're gonna have more than 500 cars, then we're going to make money on that.
Okay, then I must have read it wrong. Uh, thank you for explaining.
Anything else? Okay, looking at the agenda, we have the future agenda.
Forget, I'm sorry. I, so, sorry, Sonal, your question alarmed me because I, I thought I remembered looking at this to make sure. Section 17 does say that we have the right to use 50 spaces. If we're going to use any more than 50 spaces, the parking, the charge will be $20 per car. And then in parentheses says unless there is a buyout. So we did elect the option to do the buyouts in our fee, so that wouldn't apply. I'm looking to my left, but you're on the screen to my left. That would not apply.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, future agenda items, these were actually the same ones that were listed on the PMP. Anything else to?
The board meeting, yes, but for the October committee meeting, they're unique.
So we're going to look at the tax levy, estimated tax levy. Again, the capital projects for next summer. And then, uh, school maintenance project grant, how that's going to be used, then more on the cafeteria design. Anything else? Okay, uh, we will call this meeting to adjourn.
Chairman Batson?
Yeah.
We did have a LHS student who was, uh, arrived to participate in public comments, but he arrived late. I don't know if he missed his opportunity or.
No, there's a public comment section coming up at our next meeting, which starts.
We're doing a special meeting right after this that'll have public comments. So you can address us then, which is coming up like right now. Do you want to take a five minute quick break?
No, because I think this will be real fast and then we'll take a break before we adjourn. Executive session, yes. Okay, um, then I will call to order the, um, special meeting for tonight. And we will start off with an invitation for public comment with a three-minute time limit.
Right, so I heard a couple of you mentioned this earlier, but there's been a growing interest among students and some of our environmental organizations at school for increased solar energy or solar panel usage.
Do you mind telling us your name?
I'm Sam Powell.
Hi, Sam. And you're a student at LHS?
Yes.
Are you a, what year are you?
Senior.
Great, thank you so much.
And so our environmental, uh, clubs or organizations would be, um, willing to kind of help, uh, pursue these, uh, these goals. And right now, really what we're curious about is knowing what obstacles there would be in, um, starting work to, uh, pursue these increased solar panel usage goals and how we would overcome those obstacles. And so if there is a way we could, um, get that information laid out somehow and like knowing uh, what barriers, what barriers we'd have to cross to, um, get work started on that.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else wishing to address the board for public comment? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to the, uh, point of the special meeting, uh, which is to, um.
Forgive me, I'm just, did you, I, I apologize. Did you do roll call to start the meeting?
I did not do roll call. Thank you very much for keeping this on track. Um, since this is a special meeting, we do need to take roll call. Carol, whenever you're ready. Thank you, Dan.
Jim Batson.
Here.
Kara Benjamin.
Present.
Don Carmichael.
Here.
Tara Drumkey.
Here.
Lisa Hessel.
Here.
Sonal Kulkarni.
Here.
Sonal. Yes.
Great. We note all members present. Thank you again, Dan. Okay, so the purpose of this meeting, um, following the resignation of Casey Rooney at our last board meeting. Jim Batson was appointed as the FNF Committee Chair and Don Carmichael was appointed as the PMP Committee Chair. Um, and I did note that the Office of Board Secretary will be on the agenda for this meeting. So we will move on. There's, uh, uh, board members will note, uh, we're moving on to the script.
Well, I guess it's up to me then. Uh, I am formally announcing my resignation as Board Secretary. You don't have to vote to accept it.
So.
You can, but it would not be in the spirit of the intention.
And just to clarify, the spirit of the intention is, um, each of us six board members have accepted additional responsibility beyond, uh, board members. We know, um, that Kara Drumkey, uh, is now going to serve on the calendar committee, which we're very grateful for you being willing to donate your time to that above and view, above and beyond your regular duties. Don, as we noted, is our new PMP Chair. Kara Benjamin very generously, um, serves as our seat all representative. Um, Jim Batson serves as our IASB delegate as well as our FNF Chair. Um, and I, um, am, uh, just sort of taking up time and space.
As the president.
I take on additional responsibilities in my current role as Board President as well as, um, serve on the executive board for EdRed, which we are a member organization. Sorry, I couldn't pass up the opportunity. So that is the reason for this change. And, uh, we do accept for those purposes, uh, your resignation in the spirit in which it was intended. Thank you. So I declare the Office of Secretary to be vacant. Um, and would like to ask for nominations for the Office of Secretary and hereby nominate Sonal Kulkarni to the Office of Secretary.
My second.
Are there any other nominations for the Office of Secretary? Seeing none, nominations for the Office of Secretary are closed. Can we please have a motion to approve the nomination of Sonal Kulkarni for the Office of Secretary effective immediately?
Drumkey, I move to approve the nomination of Sonal Kulkari, Kulkarni for the Office of Secretary effective immediately.
Carmichael, I would like to second now.
Thank you. Uh, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Kara Benjamin.
Aye.
Don Carmichael.
Aye.
Tara Drumkey.
Aye. A pregnant part.
Aye.
Sonal Kulkarni.
Aye.
You can abstain if you want.
Excellent, so.
Aye. Congratulations.
Uh, yes, so I'd like to congratulate Sonal on her accepting the Office of Secretary.
Thank you.
And we appreciate all of our board members' willingness to go above and beyond by serving in roles, uh, in addition to their regular duties. So, uh, with that in mind, we'd like to move to recon, uh, we would like a motion to reconvene in open session.
No.
Not in closed session.
Closed.
We need to go to closed session.
Oh, we are in open. My apologies. I moved on to the wrong thing. So we will declare the special meeting.
No, no one to close session.
Sorry.
Move to convene into closed session.
Thank you.
Discuss the selection of a person to fill the vacancy of the school board. Five ILCS 120 slash 2C3, collective negotiating matters, five ILCS 122C2, and employment of an employee, five ILCS 122C1.
Batson second.
Roll call, please.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Kulkarni.
Aye.
Aye. Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Great, we will, uh, take a five-minute recess, uh, before we convene in closed session. Thank you, everyone. Uh, when we return to open session, it will be for the purposes to adjourn the meeting. No further action will be taken. Which means feel free to go home.